This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, September 28th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Michael L. Thomas, Lifeline Community Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Not on this by our heads, day and the Father, we thank you for waking us up this morning and starting our way. We thank you for another see a brand new day, day and the Father. Day and the Father, we ask you, day and the Father, to please bless this meeting. Day and the Father, please bless each elected official, please bless our city, this state, our country and this world, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
Roll call, Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's a good day that the Lord has made, let us rejoice and be glad in it. The statement of rules, any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance appeal or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must identify and pertain to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will only be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of September 21st.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion passes.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody this morning. I have five announcements this morning. My first one has to do with the RFP process for the ARP funding. On Thursday, September 30th, at 2:00, we will hold a meeting with local nonprofits who are interested in receiving the ARP funds. Thus far, we've reached out to more than 100 nonprofits to tell them of availability, and we have that many of them, let's say, shown interest of being able to acquire some of those funds. This will be a virtual meeting, and we'll have all the information with a Zoom link on our website. And also, please be mindful that there are strict guidelines that we have to follow because this is federal funding. But anyway, if you're interested in further pursuing this, it's Thursday, September 30th at 2:00 PM, and it's about the RFP process. The second one has to do with job opportunities. If you recall, back in 2016, we initiated the YES program, the YES program, which is Youth Empowered for Success, and it was to help our young people with maybe getting a first job, giving them access to educational resources, giving them an opportunity to learn some job skills, life skills, that would help them in the future with job opportunities. Thus far, in this program, we've connected over 1,000 youth to business, excuse me, job opportunities. Last week, we kicked off, for the first time, our Fall Yes to Business program. So we are looking for young people who want to work, and what we, we'd be working about an 18 to 20-hour week at $11 an hour, and we have local businesses that are interested in hiring those who apply and make it through the process. But if you're interested in applying for this, we would ask that you please apply at YES, that's Y-E-S-2-5-1.org, Y-E-S-2-5-1.org, for possible future job opportunities. The third has to do with recreational opportunities. Our Parks and Rec Department, we have our Fall Activities Guide that's been released, and you can go to that, and it lists all of the park and rec, all of the facilities that we have, as well as the contact information for those facilities, but it also will give you information regarding the classes, the activities, the events, and what our holiday offerings will be for this fall, and you can find that on our website. The fourth item has to do with just making a remark about this past weekend's football game at Lads Stadium between Alabama A&amp;M Bulldogs and the Tuskegee Golden Tigers in the Gulf Coast Challenge. Alabama A&amp;M won that game, but it was a very exciting game, scored like 45 to 35, about 17,000-plus people there, so it was a really great turnout, and we were always delighted to host those two teams. Last announcement has to do with Officer of the Month. We actually have two Officers of the Month. We fell a little behind recognizing the Officer of the Month for July, and so we have July and August, and Director Batiste will make those presentations.
To the mayor, council, it gives me great pleasure staying here before you this morning to recognize two of Mobile's finest. I will start with July's Officer of the Month. Officer Darren Pennington is one of the newer members of the Mobile Police Department, having just graduated from the academy in July 192019. He is highly motivated and is always eager to jump in and assist wherever needed. He is currently assigned to the 3rd precinct in Area 34 in Tomerville on Squad 3. During the month of July 2021, his self-initiated activity paid off. On July 4th, 2021, at approximately 0:25 hours, Officer Pennington responded to Paper Mill Road for a report of drag racing and shots being fired. Upon his arrival, Officer Pennington observed a black Challenger and a black Camaro spinning their tires in the roadway. He attempted to make a stop, and both vehicles sped off, leading Officer on pursuit. As the vehicles attempted to get away, the Camaro lost control and struck the Challenger, causing it to travel through a guard rail and down an embankment. The male subject driving the Camaro was charged with attempting to elude, and the suspect driving the Challenger was charged with attempting to elude and possession of marijuana to second degree, and also found to be in possession of a handgun that had permit. His description to include clothing and caliber of handguns was reported for a shooting that occurred earlier at a club. The investigation is still ongoing. On July 9th, 2021, at approximately 0:03:25 hours, Officer Pennington was dispatched to the area of Standard Road for a blackmail, wearing an orange hoodie, walking through yards and looking into car windows. The suspect was located riding a bicycle and attempted to flee, but surrendered after a short pursuit. The suspect was in possession of change, liquor, a bag, and other miscellaneous items. The subject was questioned and admitted to breaking into numerous cars in the Tomerville area, but was not sure of the exact location. Investigators were able to confirm two of the auto burglaries for which he was charged. And on July 13th, 2021, at approximately 12:35 hours, Officer Pennington observed a white Dodge Charger driving recklessly on Spring Hill Avenue. He initiated a stop on Mobile Street, but when approaching the vehicle, the subject sped off, leading him on a short pursuit. Pursuit concluded when the Charger struck two other vehicles, and the driver fled on foot. Officer Pennington chased the suspect through several backyards, and backup arrived. He was eventually captured. Officers found marijuana, promethazine syrup, and two handguns that were loaded with high-capacity magazines located in the floorboard of the driver's vehicle. Also, one of the handguns was reported stolen. The suspect was charged with LSA felony, attempting to elude police, possession of controlled substance, receiving stolen property second degree, and several misdemeanors. Officer Pennington was later advised that the gun crimes unit has connected evidence from the stolen Glock with evidence recovered from several other crime scenes. During the month of July 2021, Officer Pennington responded to 100 calls for service, assisted on 47 backing complaints, made 10 felony arrests, 10 misdemeanor arrests, and issued 33 traffic citations. Officer Pennington is a good example of a law enforcement paying attention to details and taking time to conduct full investigations on his complaints. And for this, Officer Pennington was awarded July's Officer of the Month.
Chief, before we move on, I would just like to say, I pity the fool that's trying to outrun awesome. Look like anybody 18 years old. Man, if he created to try to outrun him.
He's a young one, and he physically fit.
Now, read you, Officer James Stewart rendered a service to the City of Mobile, which deserves special recognition. Officer Stewart has demonstrated excellence in his overall performance during the month of August 2021. He is currently assigned to 1st Precinct on Squad 1. On August 3rd, 2021, at approximately 0:50 hours, Officer Stewart performed a traffic stop on a white Ryder truck at the intersection of Dolphin Island Parkway and I-10 entrance ramp for failing to signal. The driver of the truck had four active felony warrants with Mobile County Sheriff's Office for unlawful possession, use of a debit and credit card, and two traffic warrants with the City of Mobile Police Department. The passenger also had four active warrants with the Mobile Police Department. After inventory of the truck, Officer Stewart located marijuana and a pill bottle with three colored pills inside. The subject was transported to Metro Jail and charged with additional charges of unlawful possession of a controlled substance and unlawful possession of marijuana in the second degree under case number 0250. On August 12th, 2021, Officer James Stewart and backing officer included Officer Jimmy Byrd of the Real-Time Response Team located a robbery suspect living in an abandoned house. Officer Stewart knocked on the door while the other officers surrounded the perimeter of the home and took the subject into custody after a brief physical confrontation. He was arrested for robbery first degree and transported to Metro Jail. On August 12th, at approximately 11:28 hours, Officer Stewart assisted in performing a traffic stop on a silver Toyota Tacoma with a Texas tag that a BOLO was on in reference to a kidnapping in the area of I-10 and I-65. Officer Stewart located the vehicle and followed the subject until multiple units arrived, including Chickasaw Police, and felony stop was performed. The suspect was taken into custody, and the children were located inside the vehicle, and they were released into the custody of the Department of Human Resources. He was charged with fugitive from justice with the Mobile Police Department and had several warrants out of Samaya Police Department. On August 13th, approximately 14:33 hours, a BOLO for a murder suspect out of Daphne Police Department driving a black Nissan Road was possibly seen in our area. Officer Stewart located the vehicle driving westbound on Pritchett Avenue. He followed the vehicle to Lavina Drive and exited the vehicle and gave commands for the driver to put his hands out the window, and the subject complied. Officer Stewart had him to exit the vehicle and held him at gunpoint until his backup arrived. A search of the vehicle revealed a loaded Ruger .380 pistol. The suspect was transported to Battleship where he was turned over to Daphne Police Department. During the month of August 2021, Officer Stewart responded to 98 calls for service, assisted on 51 backing complaints, and made 24 felony arrests, 21 misdemeanor arrests, and issued two traffic citations. And if I could put this into context, when we talk about the number of calls for service and the number of backing calls that these officers had, in a 15-day period in a month, both of these officers basically responded to a call for service almost every hour that they were at work. That does not include their drive time to the calls for service, that does not include the time that it took them to write the reports, it does not include the time it took for these officers to actually sign the warrants for these individuals. So in a typical 12-hour day, they are responding to calls for service almost every hour that they're behind the wheel of the vehicle that they're driving and serving the citizens of this community. So for the month of August, we recognize James Stewart.
Congratulations to both of the officers.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Does that include?
Are you done? Okay.
Mr. President.
And Mr. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, you talked about the RFP process. Is it possible?
Yes, so let Major address that, the RFP process on the ARP funding?
Yeah, all I wanted to say is, can you send us a copy of that process so we could put it on, the people claiming they want to apply? So I would like to put it out there in the media from my office, what they have to do. So if you would send us a copy of the RFP process.
Okay.
Then we can go from there with it.
Will do.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Monthly finance reports.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President.
Good morning.
Nice to see all of you today. You know, it's getting to be pretty much of a routine report up here every month, but I guess it could be worse. For the month, I just wanted to give you a quick recap of how we did this month, the month of August. Sales revenue continued to be strong. We had thought we were going to make $12 million in sales tax revenue. We ended up with 15.8, so about 3.2 million better than we budgeted. And year-to-date, we budgeted 142, we've come in at 169, so about $26 million in additional sales tax revenue this year. And I would say that sales tax revenue continues to be strong and will continue to be strong in the foreseeable future. So that's encouraging as we move into the next fiscal year. Total revenues for the year, year-to-date, let's see, month for August, $21 million against a budget of 17, so we came in about 4.3 ahead. And year-to-date, total revenues have been $274 million against a budget of 235, so about $38 million ahead of budget. So, you know, we're not only ahead in sales tax, but also real estate tax, hotel room tax, which was somewhat of a surprise, and overall, $8 million ahead in a budget of other taxes. Only license permits were down this year, and I would pretty much attribute that to the first half of the year when COVID was pretty much in full force, and we were still kind of reacting to that, you know, with the closure of a lot of businesses in town and schools and such. So overall, still a pretty good revenues performance. Fund balances remain strong and at healthy levels, and right now, we have unencumbered cash on hand of about $216 million. And then finally, I'd say total earnings year-to-date are $47.9 million against $31 million last year, so you can see that the year of the COVID turned out to be a pretty good year after all. Our fund balance grew by another $2.9 million in August. This week, or this coming Monday, we have a conference call with Standard and Poor's, that's the credit rating agency, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to tell our story, and it gives us the opportunity to put ourselves in a better light than we already were before and position us for better borrowing rates in the future. And I think one note of concern is that September will post likely result in a loss, and it typically does. The main reason for that is we have a lot of accruals that occur in September that we bill in October, but then we have to bring them back into September, unlike other months. But I think for the year, we're still going to have an exceptionally good year. The outlook's positive. There are some concerns with overinflation, some federal debt, interest rates, and maybe even some slowing economic growth, but all in all, I think we're in a good position as we move into the next year, and I think the next year ought to start off on a good step, so. Any questions?
Counsel. Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Holt.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion in the second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion passes.
Appeals, we have a request for a wave of the noise ordinance on June 18th in Memorial Park.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 302 Lexington Avenue and 1479 Navco Road, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to appear before the council with this public hearing? I'm sorry. Public hearing dealing with 302 Lexington Avenue, okay? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Reggie Hill.
How many people got signed up, Ms.? Two.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007. Center Street, I rise today to address public safety, best practices, and municipal election, voter ethics. I'll begin with the former. I have no need of beating a dead horse this morning. We each know that crime has risen beyond practical measure here in the City of Mobile, and we know that poverty, and sometimes poor leadership, lack of opportunity, and misuse of funds are the primary gestures or reasons, I believe, that have catapulted our community into the state of hostility and fatal destruction that has plagued us for too long. With the ARP resources, we have the greatest affording to eradicate juvenile delinquency, which ultimately leads to adult hindrances in our varying neighborhoods. However, if we repeat the same systematic strategies as before, we're only offering prelude to the continued divide and unraveling of this place we each call home, basic insanity. Many would ask, how is it that certain organizations have already been involved with the process of funding nonprofit groups through the ARP resources? Yet, the application portal is just being opened to other agencies this week. This resembles a lot like Move Mobile when the $500,000 application portal was closed before it even reached the council for approval. Why has there been no reporting indicating the organizations that properly submitted proposals and compliance with stipulations set out originally by the administration and the Finance Committee? And who will finally, excuse me, who will facilitate the selection process as it pertains to those groups who have their projects funded? These are easy questions that I believe deserve direct and transparent answers. I hope that our designated officials are willing to respect taxpayer dollars and with the response to the inquiry that impacts masses in our municipality. Was this allocation of $2 million indicated on the ARP report that was sent to DC? I know there was some confusion on that, and we hadn't seen anything presented as of late. Lastly, at 1:30 PM, on the 6th floor North Tower Government Plaza Courtroom, 6500, the Circuit Court of Mobile will hear arguments contesting the reported results of the 2021 municipal elections here in City of Mobile. For most people, because of the hype surrounding around the passing of our late president, this is your first time hearing of what's happening with this matter, unfortunately. I'm not sure if people understood that voter precinct reduction and consolidation in varying areas are infringements on voting rights, or that inadequate and unfortunately poorly trained staffing in this pose are the same thing, simply in a different form. And I'm not sure if people understood about voter precincts that were not open upwards of 30 minutes when they were supposed to be. Just for the sake of time, I just want us to understand that our city has been given chance after chance after chance after chance. The Creator has stepped in multiple times, given us the necessary signs to see how we need to move together. And I don't believe we will ever see the greatest of our city until all people are afforded an opportunity to be at the table, until all people have their opinions and positions heard, considered, and appreciated, as well looked into and implemented. And I don't think that we will be doing anything that's advantageous for municipal government if we do not find a way to fully serve the public. The people are the primary function of this existing body, and until that is the forefront and our priority, we will continue to see the incidents that we do in the city. So thank you for your, the floor, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I would just like to say a word regarding remarks that poverty is driving crime. I don't know about that now. I was born in rural Connecticut County. I had 11 other siblings in the house with me and my father, my mother. Father died when I was 16, left nine children in the house with an unemployed mother on the farm. Of the 10 that lived to get grown, all 10 finished high school, seven went to college. My brother under me was mayor of North Randall, Ohio. My sister under me graduated from South Alabama the same night. We were not poor, we were poor. It's the loss of a moral compass. Go to the church and find the young folks up in there. It's the loss of a moral compass. We was taught what's right, and we did what's right, but if our parents had not taught us what's right, we would have gone off the path too. The place that's supposed to teach you what's right ought to be in the home, in the church, and in the school, and when you lose your compass, you're going to lose your way.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say that this is one of the rare occasions when I find myself in agreement with Mr. Richardson.
Let church say amen. Madam Clerk.
Kewaunaw Gill regarding Resolution 37807. Kewaunaw Gill, 105 North Jackson Street. Open a bar?
Speaking of microphones.
I'm sorry, Kewaunaw Gill, 105 North Jackson Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we are opening up a bar and lounge, a cocktail artisan bar. She's here regarding 37807. She's here regarding 37807, that's Canary Bar.
Oh, God.
Oh, yes, sorry.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Uh, counsel, you want to have any questions?
No, let the good time roll.
All right, thank you all so much.
Sabrina Mass regarding 03833.
Good morning, everyone. Sabrina Mass, 1050 Beverly Hills Circle West, Mobile, Alabama, 36606. And good morning to the mayor and the administration, uh, Ms. Lambert and the staff and the city council as well. You know, people know when I have something to say I'm saying it. So I would say this, you know, we have many controversial issues that come up before the mayor's administration and the city council. You know, my thing is, you know, I, I'm in the community all the time. I hear this and that, and people bring things to me. But I'm here to say, you know, I want to see the city come to peace with whatever the situation is. We have to learn to respect our elected officials, our citizens, everyone in this city. We may not all agree on the things that come before the table, but we have to learn to respect our city officials, their decisions, and what they feel is best for this city. I've been here coming for this council going on 17 years, and I have great respect for whomever is elected to these seats by the people. I'm one of the people. I'm tired of everybody controversial coming at each other, keeping up disturbance, and it's really getting to me. I just want to see everybody come to peace, because if we don't start coming to peace within ourselves and our city, it's not going to get any better until the city leaders, the citizens, come together and find peaceful resolutions. We cannot begin to resolve issues in our city. As a citizen, I'm speaking to myself and other citizens in the City of Mobile. Let's have respect and have dignity and have pride for this City of Mobile. Everything is not about who's right, who's wrong, this and that. I feel like we have educated people, intellectual people, holding our seats. Some people win, some people lose, but at least have respect for each other. And I'm asking the citizens and everyone in this building to let's try to find peaceful solutions. We don't have to argue and bicker with each other all the time. And I'm just speaking from my heart today, because there are controversial issues that are going to happen today, next week, next month, next year. And until we start respecting each other and making the proper decisions that impact the whole city, we're not going to get anywhere. We're not going to go from point A to point B to point C. We're going to end up at point Z with no resolutions. I'm just calling for everybody to respect, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
We apologize. Um, Mr. Blasius, Jacob Blasius, um, was, he did call our office to speak to a non-agenda item.
Okay.
Um, it, with regard to public safety and coyote, wild coyotes. So he was left off, so we asked if he could.
Okay. Come down, sir, give us your name and your address.
My name is Jacob Blasius. I live at 6551 Evelyn Drive here in the zip code 36608. I came to address you all regarding an issue I've been discussing with City of Mobile Animal Control, who has asked me if any of you have any comments or questions that I pass that information back on to them today after I depart from this meeting. City of Mobile Animal Control is charged with the welfare of animals and public safety regarding domestic animals. They do not have any responsibility, authority, or duty to deal with something such as wild coyotes, which have begun entering city limits and pose a danger to our entire community. If they were to address this issue, they would need to have a formal rules change or a responsibility added to their mission profile, uh, and they would need to have funding to also address the issue. You might know that they're having trouble even fulfilling the vacant positions that are already there. Uh, dealing with coyotes often requires special training, for instance, for which they might need to contract out for independent trappers, but they would need that responsibility, first of all, given to them so that they could coordinate the activities and receive calls from concerned residents within the community. And they would also need to have the funding, as I said, delegated to them, whether or not their animal control officers thought that they were not shorthanded enough that they could handle that additional responsibility, or, or if they needed to contract out with a specialized trapper. I have seen three different coyotes in my yard just this week alone. Uh, two, uh, larger coyotes at night and another smaller coyote, uh, also in my yard, in my front yard, my backyard, and on my porch, a porch door I normally leave open, uh, during times of nice weather. In the mornings and evenings, I currently am carrying my, oh, I, I am presently carrying a handgun in my, on my person in my yard during the morning and evening hours. You all know, that's a public safety issue. You do not want residents having to discharge firearms to protect themselves in their own yards. Now, the reason why coyotes living in city limits is such a, a problem, it's one thing for them to be living in, in a wasteland or a, a park of some nature, but once they begin living in close proximity to humans, they eventually lose their fear of humans. Coyotes have been known to kill humans. You know, a three-year-old in Glendale, California, uh, decades ago, uh, another, uh, woman, uh, just walking a trail, a full-grown adult. But cities throughout the country are now having to deal with urban-dwelling coyotes losing their fear of humans, attacking children, attacking pets, attacking full-grown adults entering homes. This happened in, in, in another county in Alabama where a coyote actually entered a home at night, killed the owner's cat. The owner had to discharge a firearm to protect himself inside his own home. The coyote had entered through a pet door. You guys spend a fortune on making our parks, our schools, our nature trails safe for the residents of Mobile, whether walking, jogging, or, or even.
Excuse me, sir, your, your time has expired. I do appreciate you, um, coming down and addressing the council, but let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
When you first started off, you said that the city employees told you to come down here?
Uh, the, I, when I was speaking, uh, with animal control employees, uh, during a break yesterday, the, the entire staff came out to ask me what problem I've been having with the coyotes in the area, asking me about the kind of dangers they present. They were very professional, very courteous. They offered to help, but they stated that unfortunately at the present time, because their only duty and responsibility is to be dealing with the dangers presented by domestic animals. You know, if there was a pit bull that had bit somebody in the neighborhood, or a pit bull that had attacked several cats in the coy, in the neighborhood that were loose, they have the authority and the funding and the man, and, and the manpower to go after that pit bull and deal with it. If there's an entire pack of coyotes that are menacing a neighborhood, because it's considered technically wildlife, they don't have the authority or the responsibility to deal with that at the present time, which means that their responsibilities or duties would need to be changed by the City of Mobile, which has a, a authority over that department.
Yeah. Mrs. Snowden, would you like to speak on behalf of that?
Let me, let me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Vice President, we, we've dealt with the coyote problems before whenever they're menacing, uh, particular neighborhoods.
Yes.
Uh, and he is correct in the sense that the animal control officers are not equipped nor trained to deal with that type of predator. So we do engage professional trappers, and the reason we engage professional trappers is trapping in an urban environment is very difficult, because you have unintended consequences of domestic animals also being caught in these traps. And so it depends on the environment in which we are trapping, but we do engage professional trappers to assist us. And you may remember a few years back, we had a large amount of domestic animals taken by coyotes in the Land Fair subdivision, and we were able to successfully eradicate those coyotes.
I, I have a question.
Ms. Rich.
Your dialogue is very interesting, especially your conversation, which none of us were privy to, about the staff, you know, knowing there's an issue or, or hearing it, there's an issue.
And volunteering the help.
Right.
But.
Yeah, and, and that, and that's a good thing, and I'm glad they were professional and dealt with you as, you know, as well as they could. The, the idea that, um, there isn't the allocations to pay for the professional trappers, that is operational. Um, it's, and if this legislative body needs to do something that then empowers them to be able to stop this threat, I mean, I'm, I guarantee all of us have received calls about missing pets and, and video ring, doorbell, pictures of the coyotes coming across people's neighborhoods. And so, um, I, I would just request that on your behalf and, and for the citizens at large, that the administration look at the resources that we need to put towards this, um, problem that we know is a real problem.
Would it be helpful to you if they sent a formal request, a document to you, asking for what?
That would be all administrative, because we don't direct city employees. I would, I would ask the administration to let this council know if there's anything we need to do to, um, help legislatively with any empowerment that they might need in order to then get the proper budget. But it seems that the administration is aware, um, and that it's just getting the right resources in place so that we can protect citizens and domesticated pets from this wild animal threat that we know exists. So if the staff has concerns, they would bring that to the administration, not to council, but legislatively, if we need to do anything that makes this happen, by all means.
May I address the gentleman?
No, sir, I apologize. He didn't.
Yeah, and, and I thank you for raising all of this.
Who should they contact?
I think you, Mr. Snowden gave you his, his card, didn't he?
Oh, okay.
Right. Yeah, he's been assigned.
Okay, I see.
Mr. Snowden is your contact. Mr. Vice President?
Sorry to take up, uh, more time than I was initially allowed. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
You're fine. Thank you so much. But as Ms. Rich say, I got you, Mr. Richardson. They administrate. If laws need to be made, that's where we come into action. But every day works with the employees, et cetera, with the city, it's the administration and everything.
All directives come from.
What's saying.
Mr. Vice President?
Hold on, Mr. Richardson, then you, Mr. Daze.
Okay.
Vice President, I believe that Chief Barber stated that they had encountered this problem before. They know what to do. He's already said that. And, and Councilmember Rich is saying if they need, if the administration need the council, call on us. So I think they, they already know what to do. Our people, they know what to do. He just told you.
Thank you for answering my question. I'll be sure to pass it on to them, that they may contact Mr. Snowden and who else in the administration they need to work out.
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah. Mr. Daze, then you, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would also would like to thank gentlemen for coming down today. Uh, and, um, we have had issues, uh, in District 5 with respect to coyotes, um, particularly in the 36608 area of District 5. And as, uh, Chief Barber mentions, uh, we had, uh, some significant issues in the Land Fair community, and I contacted Chief Barber. He was able to, uh, engage private trappers, and they dealt with the problem. Um, and, and I think we've got a path forward to address your concerns. One thing I think it's important to point out to the public at large is the coyotes are going where there's food. No food, no coyotes. They're going to where there's food. So what the citizens can do to help control this problem is don't leave dog food outside, don't leave cat food outside, don't leave any food outside, cover your trash cans, don't feed feral animals. We got people all over the city feeding feral cats and other feral animals. All you're doing is creating a problem with coyotes down the road. So there, there are steps that the citizens can take in order to, in order to alleviate this problem also. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Right before you come, Ms. Gregory, I ask if anyone has electronic devices, please put on the vibrator or opposition at this time, please. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. And, and yes, I, I agree with Mr. Daze on that. Um, in some parts of the country, bears are doing the same sort of thing. They're foraging for food. Uh, most of the coyote, uh, reports that I receive are from neighborhoods that back up to woods. So they're coming in from the woods, again, looking for food and that sort of thing. Um, so we just have to be mindful of that. One thing that I think would help Director Barber and others is on Next Door Neighbor, because so much of this is reported on Next Door Neighbor that I see, and of course, all the neighbors are seeing. If you all could put out the information about what people are supposed to do, who are they supposed to contact, and then give them some tips on how to prevent, hopefully, coyotes from, uh, appearing on their doorsteps and trying to get into their homes. Um, similar subject is with alligators. I get alligators at Langen Park. People are constantly emailing, calling about the alligator that's going to, you know, run up and attack them at the park. For the most part, from what Shonda Smith has sent me from, uh, Fish and Wildlife, is they are sunning. They're not going to start running after you, but there's always that threat. So again, if we could put information out about what to do if you see a coyote, what to do if you see an alligator, you know, how do you as a citizen, if you're at the park, what do you do? Um, and, and try to inform the public about these situations that we know about them, we have a path forward, and here is what we do, but here is who you contact if you see them. I think that would help.
Resolutions held over. 6679 requests mayor to officially deem employees of the Mobile Public Library as eligible workers to receive premium pay for ARP funds.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second. In the discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
I know that, um, Councilman Richardson has sponsored this, um, resolution, and it was quite a topic of conversation, um, when we were going through the ARP funding mechanism. And we had some information that basically established the fact that the mayor, um, or his administration could put the library, um, employees, deem them as, um, essential workers during the COVID timeframe that they came in, um, in spite of their, um, own health being compromised, and they did an excellent job. It was one of the things, when my phone rang off the wall, people wanted to know, when could they get books, when could they go there? And, um, the library responded, um, you know, immensely and did a fabulous job. I understand that, um, they have a foundation, they have resources. I was given, um, sent to my office, I don't know if every councilperson got it or not, um, about them having, uh, something like $4.1 million that they could then, um, put in place for these, um, essential workers to be, they could deem it themselves, in other words, they weren't part of the city. Um, it is also incorrect to say that someone has to be an employee of the city to be deemed an essential worker. That also was cleared up. You do not have to be considered a city employee. Um, the system, um, that is overseeing the release of the funds could deem, um, childcare workers if they wanted to do that, as an example. Um, we were focusing on the library workers. I did, um, ask, um, Mr. Barber, or, uh, excuse me, Chief of Staff Barber, if any of the money that was on the list that, um, showed the four, I think it was 4.2 million, I don't have his note, but, um, if any of it was reserved, in other words, is that money actually, you know, just all loose change and not allocated for other, um, items? And apparently, their reserve totals about 1.2 million at most. So the amount of money that would come out of what they can have some flexibility in is not all that adequate. And, um, again, they serve the citizens of Mobile. We're not asking for the employees that served, um, library, um, facilities out in the county. We own those buildings that they're in. They are city buildings. Um, they've always been considered city employees. Um, and for whatever reason, the idea that they're no longer city employees, uh, that, that's not the arguing. I believe this council should request that the mayor deem them as essential for all the right reasons and be able to give them, um, exactly what all city employees across the board received. So I'll be voting favor, and I hope that there are five members of this council that will do the same to request. And just because we request doesn't mean I understand that we direct the mayor's office, but I would like to say that on behalf of the citizens but I would like to say that on behalf of the citizens that I represent, library employees at the time during the pandemic, the, the stretch of the pandemic, did everything in their powers to be um, available and make the resource work. And it was very, very important to our citizens. It's the only education outlet that this city council and the administration oversee and have any resources of, of any significance to give back to this community through tax dollars. And now we have a federal program. I hope that you would like to see those library employees um, given the same respect as our city employees were given. Thank you.
And other council members.
Yes, sir. Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
So I said not to be redundant, I would just like to say, ditto to Councilmember Rich's comment.
And other council members.
Uh, Mr. Vice President?
Ms. Gregory.
During our pre-conference meeting, we discussed this, and since it is a request to the mayor, I just asked the mayor while we were sitting there, uh, if he was willing to do this, since it is just strictly a request and has no official responsibility to do it one way or the other, whether we pass this or not. So I guess I'll just repeat that. Uh, Mayor, if we request this, or if we are requesting this, then what is your response?
So my request is that we, uh, the council do not, you know, further the action on this. Uh, yes, maybe the mayor can deem whether these are essential employees, but I think the, the mayor's responsibility has to do with the city employees. These are not city employees. And so therefore, I'm not going to delve into the business of the hospitals, other businesses, and the other quasi-government entities to determine whether their employees are essential or not.
Yeah, we could have tabled this, in fact, I thought we were possibly going to table rather than move forward with the vote, but.
Now we're going to vote.
No vote. Are you finished, Ms. Gregory? And other council members.
I would say that we had learned, uh, in pre-council that the city of Mobile do put in approximately seventy-two percent um, of the money to the library budget, you know? And I was contacted by a uh, Mobile Public Library, uh, worker. Uh, this worker works down in Bala Batri. So my question is, is it fair for Mobile to keep on getting picked on? We already get picked on by the pay-as-you-go. Mobile's, you know, put more money in pay-as-you-go, but we don't get that much out of, especially in District, you know, parts of District Three. Um, do not get that much money out of pay-as-you-go. And I'm looking at this as the, really pretty much the same thing, because we have libraries, uh, Mobile Public Libraries located in Bala Batri, um, other places.
Sarah Lanson's.
Outside of the city limits and et cetera. And again, the one person that, employee that I heard from works down in Bala Batri. So the question is, is it fair to the city of Mobile to keep on spending out money and these others, smaller cities that also receive A R P, which include the county, you know, are they giving towards the uh, Mobile Public Library?
Okay.
And from my understanding that, you know, from my understanding, again, uh, that they're not, so is it, the question is to C J is, is it fair on the city of Mobile?
Can, can I answer that question?
I'm not finished, Ms. Rich.
I'd like to speak, though.
Yeah, I'll let you speak as soon as I finish. But um, you know, and what I came up is pretty much, it is not. Uh, so therefore, I would not be uh, supporting this resolution. And again, if the other cities was putting into it, et cetera, I probably look in, you know, supporting the resolution. But again, if the city's not, the administration's saying they are not, you know, city employees, then I believe that we should move on. Ms. Rich.
Thank you. Um, the amount of funding that was requested was only for the employees that work in the city's library facility. They serve the citizens of Mobile. We would not be funding. They would have to go see the county or the city, um, that they, the library building. We don't own those buildings in Sims, we don't own the one in Saraland, we don't own the one in Bala Batri. We only own the ones that are in the city limits. And the amount of funding that um, we were told was basically, not basically, emphatically only to see the city employees and even the ones that were part-time, they were separated out, that worked part-time. There were um, also employees that did not come in, stayed home the whole time during the COVID um, pandemic um, problem. They were not included. Um, it was a very targeted amount of people, and it only dealt with the ones that serve in those libraries that serve our citizens in our corporate limits. We would not be asking to fund the other employees. They would have to see other resources happen. And um, so that, I, I don't know if that changes your opinion because they served your citizens, um, and that's all where the money would go. Their resources would be down to, they have one point two million, they were asking, I believe it was six hundred. So um, they would have to go into their unassigned money at almost fifty percent, which takes away from programming, educational programs, all kinds of, of things that the library does independently, most of the libraries serving our citizens of Mobile. So the request, um, I believe is founded, and for years, they were considered city employees. They were considered city employees. There was an agreement that goes back to nineteen oh one, calling them city employees. It's just um, not current that they are considered city employees.
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, Mr. Daze.
There can be absolutely no doubt that the people that work for the library system are not employees of the city of Mobile. Whether they were before is irrelevant. They're not today. Now, the library board could at any time petition the legislature to change them into city of Mobile employees, but they have elected not to take that step for reasons that are clear only to them. But they are not city employees. Now, I'm opposed to this because I don't think I should ask the mayor to do something that I'm not willing to do. Why should we say that these people, who are good people, but not employees of the city of Mobile, should get premium pay? Think of all the other people in the city of Mo, of Mobile. Healthcare workers in the hospitals, people in the food banks, people in the shelters who absolutely had to come in to contact with the public every single day. They're not city of Mobile employees. So why would we exclude them from premium pay but give it to the library employees who are not employees of the city of Mobile? If we're going to give out premium pay to people who put their, who, who, people who are not employees of the city of Mobile, then it should go to those individuals who really ran the risks. And finally, as our council vice president has pointed out, seventy-something percent of the library's budget comes from the city of Mobile. So if they have a reserve, whether it's two million dollars or one million dollars or four million dollars, seventy percent of that was provided by the citizens of Mobile. But if the library board wants to give premium pay to its employees, let them do it. But we shouldn't take away uh, from the A R P funds that we have and start providing premium pay to people who are not employees of the city of Mobile.
And also, um, I do not want to open up another can of worms up either, because as I stated earlier, the only employee from the Mobile Library contacting me was from Bala Batri. So there would be a bunch of confusion as in who's city employees and who's not. To me, it seemed like it needed to be some education on that, it needed to be done towards the employees to rather than know, you know, who's really their boss.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Most fails. Madam Clerk.
If there are no objections to the remaining items, I will um, take them all together. Zero-eight-seven-eight-nine, approved purchase order tractor and equipment company for wheel loading for motor pool. Zero-eight-seven-nine-zero, approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for two Chevrolet Silverados and one Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck. Zero-eight-seven-nine-one, approved purchase order for firefighter rehabilitation and command truck. Zero-eight-seven-nine-two, approved item base for up fitting of uh, M P D vehicles. V-zero-eight-seven-nine-three, approved purchase order to Deering Company for two zero-turn mowers. Twenty-one-seven-nine-four, authorized contract with Harris Contracting Services for improvements to Trinity Gardens Park. Twenty-one-seven-nine-five, authorized contract with McElhany Construction Company for Trinity Gardens area street and drainage improvements. Twenty-one-seven-nine-six, authorized contract amendment with McCrory and Williams for engineering services, twenty-eighteen Pago. Twenty-one-seven-nine-seven, authorized contract with Dorch Figures and Sons for hurricane damage roof repairs, Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center. Twenty-one-seven-nine-eight, authorized contract with Clean Earth of Alabama for house so hazardous waste collection event support services. Twenty-one-seven-nine-nine, authorized performance contract with the Friends of Magnolia Cemetery.
So moved.
Second. Then properly moved in second, in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero-three-eight-zero-three through zero-three-eight-three-two.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
I move for immediate consideration of items zero-three-eight-zero-three through zero-nine-eight-zero-six and forty-eight-zero-eight through zero-three-eight-three-two. Item number thirty-seven-eight-zero-seven to lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Can I get a second? Then properly moved in second, in a discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr.?
So, Mr. Vice President, I want to point out that thirty-seven, thirty-seven-eight-zero-seven, which was not called out, that is not a first read. That is the canary bar, has a different number, but the reason it's under consent, it is not a first read, has appeared on the agenda multiple times. There was a planning commission issue that held it up. Um, there was some disturbances by the neighbors during that session, but they are clear to go. Those planning commission issues have been taken care of. Their occupancy issues have been taken care of, and we'd ask that you move forward with it, because it, it's, it is not a first read because this exact same resolution has appeared.
Which one are you, I'm sorry?
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven-eight-zero-second, recommended approval of A B C Board of Insurance Lounge Retail License, and if you'd like to.
Yeah, Mr. Woods, I believe that we had tabled that item last month, so this is actually is new.
I'll explain that later, but it's at the council's best interest to probably move forward with it, because it's the exact same resolution.
It's a different number.
Just a different number, which is not legally significant.
It's a different number, it's a different read.
It's a different number.
Uh, to the young ladies, um, the council rules is that when things hit our agenda, uh, one council member can hold it up, um, for the next week and everything. So your item that's before us on today, uh, is just going to be held up until next week and be voted on next week and everything, okay? So uh, just another week, um, council member has some questions and, you know, they want to ask, and once they ask the question, they have one week to do it, and they appear back on our agenda on next week, next Tuesday, next Wednesday, excuse me.
So what I want to tell you all, just so you know, um, so these young ladies are opening up in the business right now. Thirty-seven-zero-eight-zero-seven face significant opposition at the planning commission level. Um, most, most of, they just seem to be nothing but um, opposition to who they are. So understand that it only has a different number, and the people who are trying to keep them from doing this, the people who want this held over for another week, are asking that they sign an agreement that no one else, who doesn't look like them, has had to sign. So I just want the council to know that going forward. You'll probably see opposition next week when you hold it over.
I do know that this, and I've been in contact even when the president was here, uh, with this, you know, um, particular um, applicants, uh, that they've been trying very hard. But again, according to our council attorney, he said this is a new uh, resolution that's in front of us with a different number and et cetera. And I do understand, Mr. Woods, that they've been going through a whole lot, but by council rules, one council member has the ability to hold it up.
Non-debating.
Unanimous consent for one week.
We need to go ahead and vote on unanimous consent on the others.
Okay. Go ahead. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Most passes.
Um, zero, zero-three-eight, this is the only one, that was the only one that was, okay.
That's correct.
Zero-three-eight-zero-three and zero-three-eight-zero-four are appointing Andre Moore to the Mobile City County Youth Council, reappointing Dara Green, and appointing Reggie Copeland Junior to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority. Zero-nine-eight-zero-five, approve transfers from the City Council discretionary accounts to various capital accounts. Zero-nine-eight-zero-six, reallocate monies from District Two discretionary funds to traffic engineering, street traffic improvements for traffic calming device for Chatham Street. Forty-eight-zero-eight-eight-zero-nine are declaring the structure at um, three-zero-two Lexington Avenue and fourteen-seventy-nine Navco Road, public nuisances and ordered those demolished. Forty-six-eight-ten, rename Lake Drive Tricentennial Park as the Frederick D. Richardson Junior Tricentennial Park. Sixty-eight-eleven, approve of water special bonus to the August Firefighter of the Month. Fifty-eight-eight-twelve, declare weed's noxious, weedling group sixteen-nineteen. Sixty-eight-one-three, approve of water special bonus to the August Officer of the Month. Sixty-eight-one-four, eight-one-five and eight-one-six are determining appropriations to Lily B. Williamson High School, revitalized D I P, United Methodist Inner City Mission of Mobile, serve a public purpose and approve payment. Zero-one-eight-one-nine, authorized memorandum of understanding with S M G and U S A Health University Hospital regarding U S A Hospital's use of the Civic Center properties for facilitating COVID-nineteen vaccination and testing. Zero-three-eight-three-two, appoint Mariah Rogers to the Mobile City County Youth Council.
So moved.
Second.
Then properly moved in second, in a discussion.
Well, we're looking at um, a general item forty-six dash eight-ten, and it says uh, to rename Lake Drive Tricentennial Park as D. Frederick D. Richardson Junior Tricentennial Park. And I believe that uh, this person, council member on my left-hand side, I believe that this is D. Frederick D. Richardson Junior. So uh, we got, so Fred will, I guess will remain in the city, you know, past uh, October thirty-first, because every time we can go down, but Stan Road, I guess we're going to be looking at Frederick D. Richardson Junior. So uh, if this passes, congratulations on Mr. Richardson on your, you know, the park naming after you and everything.
Yes, sir. Mr. President? Can I, can I say, speak, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I would just like to um, thank this council for, for their initiative to um, put this item forth on the agenda to re, not to rename, but to add my name to the Tricentennial Park. I don't take this lightly. I appreciate your effort one hundred percent. Let me say that I lived in Shelter Gate for about ten years, that's across the street from um, the park. And we had floods, we had three floods, um, in eighty and eighty-one. Between eighty and eighty-one, we had three disastrous floods that took the homes out over on Lake Drive. The houses living right along that lake. It took all of those houses out, so then FEMA purchased those houses and the land just went to waste. It had grown back up into a swamp. And then, um, they built a new bridge. And then they built a new bridge over Three Mile Creek, and it cut Lake Drive off. You usually couldn't just turn, turn off Stan Road on Lake Drive and go down there. Well, when they, when they built the bridge, that cut that street off, so it was no way to drive back there. It was just so, consequently, the city didn't have to keep it up, it just turned into a wilderness. And then I, I had the vision that we can go in where those apartments are, make a road, just build a road down through there and create the park. And I had a hard time trying to sell my vision. Eventually, they, they bought, they captured my vision, we built the park, and it's, it's history. It's a tremendous, it's a tremendous park. And I refuse to allow, I refuse to agree to bring any sports-related activity in the park, because I want it to be a family park. I don't want, I didn't want people out there trying to eat and folk running at the ball and running all over them. We have parks that, that they have, you can do all of that. Langham Park, you know, is big enough for you can play, play over here, and then families can be over there. It's always too, park is too small to have all of those activities. So consequently, when it comes down to the whole family, the children and everybody, it is a tremendous park for that. And then when we added a splash, a path to that, and it just, it just resonated, and it turned out to be a first-class park, and we're not through with it yet, but I'm very proud of the Tricentennial Park. The reason I named it Tricentennial Park, because two thousand and two, Mobile was celebrating its three-hundredth anniversary. We opened it up in two thousand and two, on the trust, on the tricentennial of the City of Mobile. So that's why I named it the Tricentennial Park, because it designate the age of the City of Mobile. But I thank all of you for putting, putting this on the agenda and for standing behind and voting for it. Thank you.
End of discussion.
Yes, if I could comment?
Ms. Rich.
I am very happy to see this transpire, and I know that Mr. Williams had also mentioned that he would like to be a sponsor, so I know this is going to pass with flying colors. Everyone is on the list. I was here and served with Councilman Richardson in his early tenure, and he was a big advocate for this park. The tricentennial celebration was a massive event for the City of Mobile. I had already left council when that happened, but I remember the planning and the strategic planning and the desire to have this spontaneous-type family park was very important to Mr. Richardson, so it's my pleasure to see that name put in front of the park. And so I applaud his efforts in making that park a reality and that his name being blazed upon it.
Thank you, Ms. Rich.
End of council members. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced, zero nine eight one seven through thirteen eight one eight.
Move for immediate consideration of items zero nine eight one seven and thirteen eight one eight.
Been properly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Most passes.
Zero nine eight one seven, reallocate thirty-eight thousand from CIP District One Contingency Project to Oshel Road sidewalks from Union to Highland. Thirteen eight one eight, authorized change order to the contract with Grant Nichols Construction for Oshel Road sidewalks from Union to Highland, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, end of discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, what has happened, we had testimony this morning that this, these sidewalks have been completed, but it was a cost overrun, and this, we're just, we're settling our debt regarding how much we had to pay for installing these sidewalks. So it's not an indication that we are not through, that the construction is not through. They are through with the construction, we are now having to pay, pay up. So that's what we are adding additional funds, because it was overrun.
End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero eight eight two zero through zero three eight three three.
Mr. Vice President, I move for immediate consideration of items zero nine eight twenty-four, zero nine eight twenty-five, forty-five eight twenty-nine, and zero three eight thirty-three. The remainder to lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
And second.
Can I, can we still discuss this?
I need a second, first.
Second.
Gina did.
Okay, okay, yes. All right, end of discussion, Ms. Rich.
Thank you. On zero nine eight two six, this is discretionary funds. It says it's for the best rich way sign, but it's not just that. The eighteen thirty-seven fifty cents is also to go into Huffman Estates. They're redoing all of their signage, and they wanted an upgrade, and I met them halfway. The HOA is paying half, and discretionary funds are the other half. It is not just for the best rich way. So I just want to make that clear, and I would appreciate if it could go forward, since it's under, well, under the fifty thousand that we hold things up without. It's zero nine eight two six.
Mr. President?
Could you add that on the vote now? Consent? I don't know why it's there either. I was out of town.
We should vote on this today.
Yeah.
Can you add it?
Yes.
I would appreciate it.
That's fine, just add it.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be zero nine eight twenty-four, zero nine eight twenty-five, zero nine eight twenty-six, forty-five eight twenty-nine, and zero three eight thirty-three.
Hold on for a second. Attorney, do we need to, do he need to take back his old motion, then come back?
The motion, you need to, I guess amend the motion to add the one Z, which, so just have him vote on that, I guess.
Okay, so you...
I'm moving to amend the motion to add zero nine eight twenty-six.
Send you a second.
Second.
All right, discussion, Mr. Williams. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Now we got to go back, that's, now we got to go back and amend the motion, prove the motion as amended.
I thought we just did that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? All right, pass.
Zero nine eight two four, transfer two hundred fifty thousand from various Build Mobile accounts to the Capital Project for professional and technical support for long-range planning initiatives. Zero nine eight two five, transfer forty-five thousand from Build Mobile's general account to Capital for long-range planning initiatives and for the upcoming codes update. Zero nine eight two six, transfer one thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents from District Six discretionary funds to traffic engineering for best rich way street sign.
And Huffman Estates. I wanted that definitely in there. I don't want people to...
Forty-five eight two nine, except Sportsplex Drive for maintenance.
So moved.
Been properly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Most passes.
Zero three eight three three, confirm the appointment of Janet Manz, Jeanette Manzey to fill the unexpired term, the District Two Council Member.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Passes.
Call for public hearings, forty-one eight three zero. Call for public hearing to rezone property located at twenty-five fifty-one Caso Street from southwest corner of South Florida Street to Caso Street from R1 to B1, scheduled October twenty-sixth. Forty-one eight three one, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Special Needs Athletes Program, Inc., to operate a shuttle service, scheduled October twelfth.
So moved.
Been properly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Public hearings call.
Announcements.
I'm going to start backwards, this, was it afternoon?
Is it afternoon?
Yeah, just about two minutes. Ms. Gregory?
No announcements, thank you.
All right, District Six, Ms. Rich.
Just to remind everybody that there's a pretty important vote coming up next Tuesday, October fifth, for the district, so I hope that everyone will go out and exercise their right to vote. People died for your ability to do that, and I hope you'll take it serious and try to get those voting numbers up. Last, in the general election, only twenty-four percent of you came out to vote, so get a bigger spill this time, and more people come out and vote for their next council person for District Six. Seven to seven, Tuesday, October fifth, all the same voting centers as were opened last time, the four centers in District Six. Thanks.
All right, District Six, and we have District Five, Mr. Davis.
No announcements.
District Four, Mr. Williams. Okay, District One, Mr. Richardson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also say that there will be a runoff election in District One on the fifth, and encouraging all our citizens to please participate in that election, and it's, it's other, there are other districts other than District One, but I'm speaking up for District, the District One citizens. Your vote is one of the few times where all our citizens are on an equal basis. The poorest person, the poorest person in District One vote counts as much as the richest person. You are made equal. Use your vote. No vote, no hope. Go and vote. To the citizens in Trinity Garden, I'm happy to say that we, last week I talked about what was on the agenda, this week I'm voting, I'm talking about what was passed. It's two agenda items pertaining to Trinity Garden totaling more than a million and a half dollars, one for Greenback Drive. We're going to close the ditches on both sides of Greenback Drive. I was hoping to get four ditches, but the price of those ditches almost doubled, but we will be doing two ditches this year, this year. And I put in for a pavilion, a one in a place where, for the parents to be able to sit under a covering, and this pavilion should have water, lights, a grill, so while your children are playing on the playground, you can be grilling some hot dogs and hamburgers for them, and you can plug your music in, and y'all can enjoy and relax. It is coming your way, and it's a number of other things at the Dodge Center that we're going to be working on. But today, we are voting to spend almost, well, a little over a million and a half dollars in Trinity Gardens for upgrades, so I'm very proud of that.
That's it? Yeah. Okay. And for District Two and Three, we know that Councilwoman Rich and Councilman Richardson had mentioned about runoff races in District Six and One, but there is also a runoff race in District Two, asking all citizens of District Two to please go out and exercise your right on next Tuesday. And with that being said, that our council meeting will be next Wednesday, pre-conference at nine, and the regular meetings at ten-thirty. Also, this coming Friday, I have been invited out to the Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church, which is in the Maysville community. Reverend Manzey Vaughn had, went ahead and had the street renamed honorary of the church, and I will be going out this coming Friday at noon, as they reveal the naming of the street at Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church. They are getting ready to celebrate the one-hundred-and-fiftieth-year church anniversary next month. And so, and they're going to start off by this coming Friday, by having the unveiling of the, their street name at twelve noon at the Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church, and congratulations to that church. Also, on the December the eleventh, Revitalized DIP will be hosting their first fall festival. This is a community event, and with food vendors and music and fun, and more details is coming out, so citizens of District Three, please mark your calendars for Saturday, December the eleventh. Many people have been asking, you know, about our annual Christmas parade, holiday parade, and we talked to the health officer of Mobile County, Dr. Birch Isol, and he just stated it's too early to counsel it, so we still have our ears open, and we still plan on to having it. If we need to counsel, we need to counsel, but it would be primarily the same day as this fall festival, which will be December the eleventh. But as time get closer, we will make that call. Anything else from the council? We do have a special call meeting, UDC, at two o'clock PM, right here in the atrium. Anything else, council? Okay, do I get a motion?
Something, second?
Probably moved in second, end of discussion.
No.
All in favor?
Everybody.